Welcome to the Planning Commission for March 20th, 2014. May I have a roll call of the members?
Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Steve Timm.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Emery Dorsey. Amanda Weaver, absent. Silka Pop. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, six to zero.
Thank you. Now, may we have approval of the minutes of February 20th, 2014?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 20th, 2014 with two exceptions, though. The first one is in the call to the meeting to order the replace Chair Brinkman with Vice Chair Ohm. And then on the last page, have the adjournment replace Ann Brinkman Chair with Vice Chair Ohm.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Please vote.
Motion approved, four to zero with two abstentions, Brinkman and Dorsey.
Okay. Now it's time for the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay. With nobody signed up for public forum, we will move on to the public hearing. We have one case tonight, case number ZOA-14-02, an amendment to the public noticing requirements in Section 26-109 of the municipal code.
Good evening. Lauren McLaughlin with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and I will be presenting this case. I don't have a PowerPoint for you tonight, just a quick summary of this code amendment. I should point out that notice for this hearing was provided as required by the Code of Laws. As outlined in the staff report, this is partially a cleanup code amendment and partially a sustainability initiative. The city staff has adopted a sustainability policy and plan internal to the city's operations. And as part of that, we as a department have really looked to see where we can reduce inefficiencies, reduce waste. And one of those places that we've looked is our land use processing. And so that includes the referral process and also the publication process and the noticing process. One component of a public notice is letter noticing to anybody within 300 feet for a public hearing. We have been up till now sending those letters by certified mail, which has a cost of over $3 per letter. If you're familiar with certified mail, it does require a signature. A postal worker has to go to the door versus staying in the car where they typically in most of Wheat Ridge deliver mail from the truck. You have to attempt delivery, I think, three times. And then if it's unsuccessful, you leave it at the post office and the recipient has to go to the post office to pick it up. It's not the most efficient way to get a letter to an intended recipient in a timely fashion. And we receive numerous of these certified mailings back to our offices after a hearing is done because it was never picked up. So from a cost standpoint and efficiency standpoint, and really with the intent of getting a notice to the recipient, staff is proposing that we remove the certified mailing requirement and send letter notice by first-class USPS mail. The other few components of this code amendment are just updates. There were some inconsistencies as far as whether we have published and property sign notices 10 or 15 days. Our practice has always been to be 15 days, two weeks before a hearing. And so we've cleaned that up. And then the final cleanup component is how we publish on the city website versus a newspaper. We always publish a case announcement and the address and brief description in a newspaper. The full legal description has been published on the website for some time now. We just thought it was appropriate while we're cleaning up this section to make that more clear. So that in summary is the purpose of this code amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
For removing the requirement that the legal description be included in the published notice, is do all locations in Denver or in Wheat Ridge have addresses, street addresses?
That's a good question. So as soon as something goes, begins a development application or building permit, it's assigned an address if it doesn't already have one. The only example of an unaddressed parcel would be something that's completely vacant. Okay. So we usually sign that right away. Okay.
The only question I have is on the certified mail. You know, I see there's savings.
Press the thing here to get the green button. Just where it says push.
There we go. On the certified mail thing, at least we would know that the recipient got it, the mail piece. And if it was something that we needed to know that, that's the reason for certified mail.
Do you follow what I'm trying to say?
I do, yeah. So what happens with certified mail is that each envelope receives a barcode and a unique serial number. And so we keep those serial numbers. So if we ever wanted to go in and track who got what, we could. That's on our practice to see with every hearing who got what. We use certified mailings, for example, with code enforcement action where we definitely need to know that the one person got that. What we would do in lieu of sort of tracking barcodes is we would still go to the post office to mail these public notices for hearings. And when we do that, we bring a sheet with all of the addresses that are being sent to. And the mail clerk stamps that sheet and counts to make sure that what we've said we're sending matches with what we're actually sending. So we'll still have that verification that it was sent. We won't have the verification that it was received, but our, the pattern that we've noticed is that we're not getting all the letters out that we think we could get out if it was just first class.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
I guess I have just one follow-up question to that. Is there any, does that put the city in any sort of legal jeopardy if, like, somebody comes and says, "Well, I, you might have sent something to me, but I didn't see it and I didn't know it was going to happen."
City Attorney may be able to answer this, but I'll take a quick stab. We have, so we have three ways that we notice for any public hearing. These letters are going to any property owner within 300 feet. Certainly, we don't have all resident property owners, so it may be that they don't see the sign that's on the subject property. I don't, I don't think that it does. We've, we've put this code amendment to the test and sent it to the city attorney's office. Do you?
Lauren's absolutely right. There is no legal requirement that, that notices of public hearings in the zoning context be sent certified mail. The old pattern, for many years, was that that, that was the case. People picked up their certified mail more often in the past, frankly. Lauren makes a good distinction between zoning hearings and a code enforcement hearing where you're about to take a negative action with respect to that person's property, you know, ordering, you know, cleanup or some kind of penalty if they don't show up at the hearing that you're giving them notice of. And for that, you want either personal service or the return receipt. But many jurisdictions are moving away from certified mail, and there's no legal impediment to do that. Her point about getting out in three different ways is also important. We've got redundancy there. And the main point is that more notices get received because they're sent in the mail than, or in regular mail, first-class mail, than if they're sent certified. And if the idea is to let more people know, then send it first-class mail. There's no legal defect created as a result of the person who will come in and say, "I never saw any notice." And, you know, that's true already. And we honestly think that'll be less true as a result of this.
Great. Okay.
Yes, Scott?
I have a couple of comments and questions. So there, when I used to do planning, there was a time when, for mineral rights owners, it was very, very cumbersome in the state of Colorado. I don't know when it was, 2007 or 2008. Try to help that, and they basically told, from my understanding, was they told all the oil and gas companies that if you, you kind of have to opt in. If you don't, if you don't tell us what that notice is, then, so now it's a much simpler system. When, when I go to pull those records, the people that want, the mineral rights owners that want to be notified, there's a short, very short list. And that seemed to have simplified things. So my thinking too is that, I have no objection to not having certified. I know a lot of people probably work during the day and are not at their house when the mail comes, and so that would be unfortunate to have to, you know, try to go after hours to go to the post office and do that. So I totally agree with that. But I'm also trying to think far enough ahead that, you know, would it be conceivable or possible to tell the residents, you know, how about opting, if you want to opt out of the mail and you can convert that to an email process where the, you could give the city your email address and that you'd have to sign some type of statement that this is how you want to be notified, and then the city would still have that record of they, they sent that email. But I'm just trying to think down the road.
The way that, that we retrieve, the way that we pull the addresses right now is through the assessor's ownership records. And those we can depend on as a reliable source of information for current ownership. Our records are updated quarterly from the assessor. The trouble with email as a, as our sole dependent for notification would be that that might change and we're not the first person they're going to think to notify. There is an option for email notice, you know, not on a case-by-case scenario, but the city website does have email newsletters. And you can decide what you want to sign up for, whether it's a rec center event or a city event or a legal notice. So if you went on to the city website, you could enter your email address, choose legal notice, and you would get an email for, in fact, every public hearing that the city had if you really wanted to stay informed. But at this point, I don't know that we have a good mechanism for tracking email addresses. I'm sure that could change, you know, in 15 years as we continue to be less dependent on the mail service. We don't want to give our mail business away entirely. I know the post office depends, I think, on the city a lot for, we're a big user of the, of postal mail compared to your typical household or business. So that's the approach that we've, we've taken for now.
Any other questions, concerns? Then I would take a motion from somebody.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Section 26-109 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning public noticing requirements.
Please vote. I was reading. Hi.
That's okay.
Thank you, guys. Sorry. Patience. Moving on to now other items, Resolution 02-2014, Second Amendment to the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the commission that come before you tonight. My second time in the last few months to ask you to approve a resolution regarding the adherence to the comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge with the Second Amendment to the urban renewal plan for the I-70 Kipling Corridor's Urban Renewal Plan. I came before you, you asked me in December, which was December 19th of this year, to ask you to do the first modification to the plan. It's called a significant modification to the plan because we're including the use of tax increment financing with this project. When we came aboard for the very first modification, it was for three parcels that are on this, this piece of property. It's at the southwest corner of 38th Avenue and Kipling Street in Wheat Ridge. At the time that we came on the 19th, we only came to you with the three properties because at that time, the developer did not have a purchase option on the fourth piece. Commonly, you would refer to it as the Starbucks piece on that property. Since we came before you on December 19th, they have acquired a purchase option for the Starbucks piece. They would like to include that into the district. We then now have to come back to you with what's the second modification to the plan. To kind of give you a little background, the site currently contains a family thrift shop, Clancy's Bar, Starbucks, a family haircut, and some other smaller retail and service industries on the site. The site is part of the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan, which deemed that site to be a blighted site when it was formed in 2009, in May of 2009, when they formed the plan. We've been working for quite a few years to do a redevelopment project on that site. We were able to identify MVG Development about a year and a half ago, and we've been in negotiations with them for the redevelopment. It's taken that long to just acquire the four purchase options on the site. MVG's plan would be to demolish the entire site, which currently has very poor drainage. If anyone goes out there during a rainy season, that water flows off there to the north and really floods some of those businesses where Clancy's is located. So it's, it's got some flooding issues out there. It's got overhead, power lines running through the site and around the site that will be eliminated. It's got retail that obviously has not been successful for many years. As I said, Clancy's and the dry cleaners are the only ones remaining on the shops that are the farthest to the west of the site. The family thrift store, which was the site of the original Safeway in the city of Wheat Ridge, is, is well beyond the age that it should be and, and probably needs to be demolished this time. It's, it's got a lot of deficiencies in the site. Starbucks has expressed an interest to have a drive-through at the site. Anyone who's gone for coffee there realizes how poor the parking is at that site. And the developer has agreed to rebuild a new Starbucks there with a drive-through. And then the small offices, and I think there's a flower shop behind there, that's a very old building back, built back in the 1940s that has really run its time. So we come before you tonight asking you to review the second modification and its adherence to the urban renewal plan. MVG did hire, with the city's recommendation, to hire a consultant to go through and do what we call, they did a impact study. And part of the impact study says, what impacts is this project going to have to the TIF funding as well as how is it adhering to the urban renew, to the comprehensive plan for the city? I won't go over those line by line, but in the part of the packet is how it adheres to the comprehensive plan. At the December 19th, at the December 19th meeting, these are the exact same parts of the plan that were presented to you back then. They have not changed any ways. With that, I would recommend that you review it and pass Resolution 02-2014 confirming that it does adhere to the comprehensive plan for the city of Wheat Ridge. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So let's go, let's start on this end. Alan, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Emery, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Scott?
I have one question. Can you clarify? It says on the, I guess, the first page, it talks about the, relating to the Second Amendment. And then when I look at the recommended motion, it says finding the First Amendment.
I apologize if I did not change that. It would be the Second Amendment.
Thank you.
If we could correct that. Thank you very much for catching that.
Any other comments, questions from anybody on the commission? Okay, then I think I will.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution 02-2014, finding the Second Amendment to the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan for the southwest corner of 38th Avenue and Kipling Street is in conformance with the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan envisioned Wheat Ridge.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have one question before we vote.
Yes.
When you look at the, this, there's a recommended motion, an or, and then attachments. Do we need to call out the attachments?
You do not. It would just be to recommend the resolution.
Okay. First, we have a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, six to zero.
Okay. So do we have any staff stuff?
We don't have any other items, just a couple of scheduling notes. We do have cases scheduled for our April meetings, April 3rd and 17th, I believe, are the April dates. The April 3rd meeting will be a review of the subdivision regulations, the proposed ordinance. It's morning now, it's long. The April 17th will be a couple of land use cases.
Cool.
And Madam Chair, if I may, you'll probably be seeing more of me. Recently, the straight, the state treasurer has ruled that anytime we add tax increment to any project in any urban renewal plan, that that is considered a significant modification. So anytime that we will be doing any TIF project in the city, we'll be coming, whether it's $10 or whether it's $10 million. So we will be seeing each other quite a bit in the next few years, I anticipate.
So is that, again, goes back to my question about, should we consider TIF as part of our decision-making process? It's more of an informational?
No, correct. The only thing the Planning Commission considers is it doesn't adhere to the comprehensive plan. But if, if we have the, if we have the information.
But it's more for, it's more for public notice? Yes?
Correct. Because in order to do significant modification, the resolution you passed tonight before it goes to the city council and has a public hearing. So in front of the city council, there will be a public hearing on the tax increment financing. It has to go to the Planning Commission first for its adherence to the plan, then it goes to the city council. So there will be public input into the TIF.
Okay.
As we did, and we did that the last time on the first modification.
Okay. So here's what I, if I may make a recommendation. The next case that we hear that has TIF, and for the next couple cases that we hear that have TIF, and that we clearly educate the public on what we, the commission, can and cannot consider as part of our decision-making process. Can we do that?
Yeah. I absolutely understand your concern because we just spent an hour talking about, you know, the, the fact that the Planning Commission's role with respect to urban renewal plans is to determine whether that plan is consistent with the master plan.
Right.
That all makes sense, or makes more sense, I guess, and easy, it's easy to understand. Where you've got a brand-new urban renewal plan that actually talks about this use is going to be here and that use is going to be there, and here's what's going to happen there. And it's, it's easy and understandable to see that you would be within your job to compare that to the comp plan and say, yes, these uses match up. Because of the way the statute's written, major modifications go through the same process. Well, a major modification to move a use around still would make sense, wouldn't it? Because you're still comparing it to the, to the master plan. Okay, now it's a major modification, and frankly, it's all about finance. But yet, you're needing to review it. But yet, the review standard for your, your remains isn't consistent with the comprehensive plan. Couple of things around that. For you, you'll realize, well, there's not a lot in the comp plan that bears on this. But to the extent there is anything, yes, we believe this financing tool is, you know, this modification is, is not consistent with the comp plan because you're not rendering a decision on whether it's a good idea from a financial standpoint.
Right.
That's the first point. And that works for you, but I think where you're headed is, the room has 10 people that are all about just the finance piece because that's what it looks like.
Right.
That's what frankly it is.
Right.
And they don't get that disjunct at all, and they're going, well, wait a minute, it's about the finance piece. How come we can't, you know, we're, how come you can't take an action around changing the TIF and moving the base around or whatever? And it will be an art to explain to them, and it might be Steve Art's task to explain to them in his staff report, that, you know, we're here because of major modification. Planning Commission's role, commission and members of the audience tonight is relatively limited.
Right.
Comparison to the, to the comp plan. I understand to the extent people are concerned about just the financial aspect, you can certainly mention that, but that's not something that commission's going to be able to act on. But don't worry, folks, because there's an upcoming hearing from the city council as a part of this process, and everyone, that's going to be scheduled for whenever, and everyone's invited for that. I can't, thanks for the question and also allowing me to rattle on like this, but, but I absolutely get why you're asking it because you'll have people that will not understand what's going on here. How come we can't, you know, how come, how come your job is not as broad as, as it appears this particular thing is?
Even if, I, I don't, what I'm concerned about is they'll hear mention of it, so there, the assumption is that we, we consider that. And so just a simple, couple-line sentences that explain what our purview is every time that we hear one of these, for the first half a dozen times, and then, and then put it in the meeting notes or in the write-up, and I think we should be okay. Honestly, I, my gut tells me.
That is easily done, Madam Chairman.
I appreciate that.
It'll be similar to the cases where you, you guys sometimes hear a subdivision case and we're not looking at the site plan, but it's hard to separate those details. So we try, you know, this, this is new, you know, I haven't heard a TIF component at a public, you know, Planning Commission hearing since you guys said so three months ago. So the more we can do to sort of frame, there is a bigger picture, but tonight we're focusing on, on this against these criteria. We can certainly do that.
Appreciate it.
And the typical, you know, these types of redevelopment projects, as you all know, are complicated. They involve a lot of players, and they will often involve, you know, if they involve a TIF or urban renewal component, you will see that first. And then you will see the land use cases typically follow, at least one and maybe more. So they're naturally broken down into sort of separate component parts, but before we present each of those component parts, we'll try and frame sort of what we're looking at in the bigger picture.
Yeah, just to educate.
And we can let them know that their chance to comment would be at the city council meeting and at an urban renewal meeting, which are also publicly posted meetings.
Yeah, yeah. It's just going to be, it's an added person at the table. They're going to assume that we have some sort of purview or decision on it. Okay, thank you.
Great. That was all I had, was dates. Does anyone else have?
Everybody have anything?
Any other items?
Alan?
I had just a kind of general question. In terms of bringing, bringing the, some aspects of the building code in line to the progressive approach, I know that planning is taking to trying to, you know, ensure that people can, you know, live and work close, you know, sometimes at home or maybe build with less conventional materials. I actually had a neighbor stop me on my way to the meeting tonight to ask about, hey, you know, what's, what's the city think about building with shipping containers? I'm like, well, I don't know. And, and I'm not just, and, and it's not just shipping containers, but, you know, rammed earth, straw bale, you know, converted, you know, repurposed, other, other things. Just sort of for their benefit and keeping in mind sort of, you know, future planning and a little more progressive building, is that something that, you know, we're entertaining on the building side?
Your question is well timed. So we are currently operating under the 2006 International Building Codes. Most cities in the area are under more recent codes, and we are looking to jump to adopt the 2012 Building Codes at the end of this year or sometime this year. So if you have any, I don't know what the process for that is. We do have a building code advisory board, but it's through the adoption of the new codes that we would be able to input any local amendments to that. So whether it was to allow something more unique. So if you or any neighbors have comments, I would encourage you to submit those in writing to the Community Development Department Chief Building Official. I know that the adoption is planned for this year, but like I said, I'm not sure what that procedure looks like or what the timing is. It, it would go to a public hearing eventually, certainly before a city council. But it's good timing since we haven't adopted new building codes in many years.
So that's, I got approached by somebody, and I mentioned this to Meredith before, about micro lots.
Mm-hmm.
And putting really small houses, almost, not RVs, not manufactured homes, but little tiny house.
Sure.
On, on a, on a lot.
Um, for, sorry.
It's zoning.
It's a zoning component. So we don't have a minimum building coverage. We have a maximum building coverage. So conceivably, you could build something small. It is sometimes actually a building code issue because there's, you know, minimum room sizes.
Lot, and the lot width. I mean, my land is zoned R2, but until my lot width.
Oh, you mean the lot, not the house?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, in, in the mixed-use zone districts, like you saw with the parents' row application, there's not minimum lot size. So conceivably, somebody could, could propose a subdivision with a micro lot. From a building envelope standpoint, the only minimum size that we have in the zoning code is for a manufactured home. And that's the HUD-approved type homes. So those are twenty-four by thirty-six is the minimum.
Yeah, they were talking about putting small houses on additional, additional houses on lots. So kind of like a carriage house type concepts.
The, at the planning conference last October, there was discussion of, in other communities, like a cottage lot. So you have a lot, and then you have like a little court of smaller homes. We, you know, our code would allow that under a planned building group on a single lot because we'd recognize multiple primary structures. And in any of the mixed-use districts where we allow multiple primary structures on a single lot. So I think we could, I think our zoning code would accommodate that kind of proposal. We haven't seen any yet.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Hey, anything else? I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Or not.
I move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, six to zero.